Okay, everybody, we're gonna get started. All right, everybody, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Selma City Council Planning Commission and Downtown Business Improvement District Special Joint Meeting. It's October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at four oh two in the Selma City Council Chambers at seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma, California, nine three six six two. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two, and the webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Would you please call the role, City Clerk?
Councilmember Garrett. Councilmember Mendez Navarro. Councilmember Trujillo. Mayor Protemcho. Mayor Robertson.
Here. Chair Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Corey.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Franco. Commissioner Kessler. And Commissioner Stanbridge.
Here.
Okay, well, now follow through with that Downtown Business Improvement District Board members. I have Board Member Brayden. Also serving as a bid board member, Ramza Curry.
Here.
Parmender Singh. And Shar Tucker.
Here.
Thank you.
Right, potential conflicts of interest. Any member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted on in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five four dot two B. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and direct their comments towards the councils. Does anybody have any oral communications at this time? Anybody on the phone or online with a question or comment? Okay, with that, we will start our study session, which is a draft downtown strategic plan review.
Give a quick intro as Walker makes his way to the front. Council Planning Commission Bid Board members, thank you so much for your time and for being here. I think this plan has been a long time coming. We have a lot of excitement and a lot of momentum going on in the downtown, and this strategic plan is really a monumental step in the process, getting all of our ideas, our ideas in a document, prioritizing them accordingly, and getting to work. So I think I'm grateful for all of you and all of your participation thus far, whether it was on one-on-ones or participating in the charrette. I hope that you guys have your comments and your feedback ready. I'm gonna turn it over to Walker, who's gonna walk us through just a quick exercise here first before we get into the actual presentation of the plan.
Put together just a brief, a brief survey that you can access on this website called Slido, and you do that by scanning the QR code. I think it's, it'll ask you some questions about your perception of downtown and why you come here and how these priority projects that we're gonna talk about in a few minutes are sort of ranked based on your perspective.
Yeah, so we'll take it question by question. The first one here, we just kinda wanna get everybody, get a little icebreaker, for lack of a better term. What motivates you when you visit downtown? What is it that brings you to downtown Selma? Just so we can capture everybody's participation. If you scan it with your phone, you can type right into your phone, and it'll populate right here. Oh, so we've got our first answer.
And in a second, we'll switch to the PowerPoint. I'll give everybody just a little more time to sort it all out. Just a sign of progress, when I was here last time, Maiden Voyage was not open, and there was speculation about when they would open. Driving around, you know, just before this meeting, I see them open, and Casey had sent some social media about it. I think even Chris on our team had looked at it. So it's great to see that. That's coffee is the winner.
You should stop by on your way home. They're open late now.
Certainly gonna go by. Okay, is anybody struggling? Anybody who wants to do this struggling to get it to work? All right. Before I get started, just wanted to acknowledge today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's actually a holiday for my office, but I'm up here regardless, because it was the date that worked. And I mentioned this at the beginning of the strategic plan, but apparently this area was settled by the Yocat tribe. And so we did wanna kinda go backwards in time even to sort of pre, you know, Western European development, to try and get a sense of what had been driving development of the area. So, you know, a long time ago, Central Valley was much marshier, and all kinds of different landscape was present. But we know there is this indigenous history, and then driving in, I kind of followed mill ditch, which is a big historically important element of the community as well, because apparently there must have been a mill if there's a mill ditch. And I don't know what they were milling, if it was flour or something, but you look at our gridded city and you see this wiggly line. Nice to try to capture some of that historical. Okay, let's jump into the presentation. This was set up to be somewhat informal, so if you have thoughts or questions or want clarification, just raise your hand and ask. So this is on purpose, not a conventional city council meeting with the more rigid agenda. So, and you're all here because you're all stakeholders in Selma, and we need your input. So, here we go. Downtown Selma strategic plan. So this is to set a strategy for going forward into the future to revitalize the downtown. It doesn't have all of the, the, you know, intense detail around any given project, but we're trying to say, this is what's a value, here's what you can build upon, and here's some ideas of where you could go forward strategically across a number of dimensions. These are our findings and recommendations from an initial meeting with the bid that happened, I think, back in February, some phone calls with different staff members, research that we did, and then the charrette that was held in May, I think it was, yes. And some follow-up research and some follow-up conversations with city staff is all synthesized into the document that you all should have received beginning of this last week, I think. Yeah, okay, now I have the power to switch this line. Okay, so here's our goals, just to develop a shared vision and some sort of sense of the identity around downtown Selma, the role that it plays in the community, the character that it wants to communicate. There are assets, you have great historic buildings, you have a walkable area, there's, you know, things like the art center and some new restaurants, cafes, historic cafes. So when you start making the list of assets, it's not a short list. We also tried to identify some new opportunities, we'll talk about those, put those into a strategic form, like I mentioned, and then really focus on things that could be implemented, ideally some things in the short term, and then some things that will take a longer period of time. But we really tried to focus on things that are actionable and not sort of pie in the sky. There we are. Here's our study area. Got it. I've been told I have to take the mic with me. Okay, I think most of you are familiar with this, but just so you know, it's, it's rather large. So, I mean, here's, here's High Street, which a lot of us think of as the historic core, and that's how we describe it in the document. Here's the railroad tracks. We're not seeing the freeway, but here's Witsen, this may be the ninety-nine over here. And then it includes Lincoln Park and kind of over in this area where we're located now, the shopping center, and then goes up, you know, as far as the school and Aaron Street. There is different character in each of these places, it's not sort of a homogeneous downtown as you all are aware of. So, tried to come up with strategies to address each of those different conditions. Okay, here's a little bit on our approach. The whole plan-making was structured around this idea of the charrette, which is a French word for wagon. And you see what would happen if you were in art school in Paris in the eighteen eighties is the teacher would come along with this wagon, and you would put your art into the wagon. And then the people who weren't done making their art, they would jump in the wagon too and finish their project. And this has then been used in the urban planning profession and architecture profession to mean sort of an intense period of focused effort, with the idea that that sort of pressure enables us to more quickly pop out the good ideas. And so that's really what we were doing in, at the library in June. And the spirit is to be collaborative across, you know, different people's interests of the apartments of the city, recognize who the action takers are, to make something together, that's the idea of co-creation, open-minded about, you know, what could be, this idea of iteration of looking at something and then doing some research or talking to people and refining it and refining it, and then, as I mentioned, to be forward-looking. All right, here's just a few pictures. Here we are, doing a sidewalk with a number of the members of the team and city staff and city manager. Our members in there, yes. And so to get a bit of a shared, you know, feel for the place. And I've driven around and walked around on my own several times before, and we did made a great map, so that was all very helpful. Here we go. And then just some images of the event itself, which many of you came to and stopped by for, for a portion of. There was a lot of focus on giving the residents and the citizens an opportunity to, you know, express their interest in things. So you see the post-its, and all those little dots were put on pictures that people were, were supportive of. And yes, we got a lot of dots around, put back the trees, we like the cafe lights, you know, we're interested in some sort of, you know, color, shared image and cohesive, you know, aesthetic character of the place. You know, along with other things about walkability and safety and what that transition is into the downtown as you come off of ninety-nine up Second Street. So those are some of the items that were brought up by a lot of different people. Little bit on what we saw when we came here is, you know, there's a good collection of really nice brick historic buildings in the downtown. Some of that beautiful brick facade is hidden behind some, I don't know, facade upgrades that may have been done in the seventies, but there's some, you have some nice buildings to work with. It's very walkable in the, kind of, the four to six-block area that, you know, between the park and the shopping center and High Street and going down Second Street, it's a manageable scale. Lots of murals have been put up, and they're, you know, relevant, like there's the whole history of the irrigator, and the other one that shows how the water flows out of the Sierras and into the valley. And, and so they're both topical. You know, this, this view, it's kind of around the corner where Second Street bends from Bean McCall is kind of the iconic shot of downtown, and that building is really fantastic. See the brick accents, which reflects some of the material used in the buildings? And then we like the diagonal parking, because it tells you to slow down, but it also tells you that you're at a place. You're not just on any street anywhere, you're saying, this is something different. I must have arrived. And so we think that's a, an asset as well. A little bit on the economics. The big points here are in red, but it's a comparatively young population in Selma. There's a high labor rate. Labor force utilization means people have jobs, generally low unemployment, which means that there's people working who likely have some money that they could spend on sort of discretionary activities. And so some of the effort is to get them to spend it in Selma or downtown Selma. You know, we heard stories of people going to the auto mall and then driving to Visalia to go out to dinner. And so we would like them to stay in Selma and go to dinner or lunch, or whatever it is. So we've got this, you know, young people, then high taxable sales per capita, a lot of that is your auto mall, half of it coming from the auto retailers. We have mostly services and not so much retail downtown, and even service businesses operating retail space. So that's sort of detracting from some of the activity. Tight supply of space, which means that there's the demand. Then there's just an acknowledgement that downtown Selma is not the big revenue generator for the city, but I still think it's the sort of emotional heart of the city and sort of what people kind of think of conceptually when they think of being in Selma. And that's really what we wanna build on. So the, you see in red, there's a demand for more red to run in retail space, but sort of a lack of space, which means there's some opportunity for revitalization or investment. We see here is that there's, this is also the idea of supporting potential new development of housing is a lot of what this is about. So there's a shortage of supply, vacancies have declined. And then sometimes housing ownership is out of reach, so there's a potential for, you know, for sale, but also rental housing in the downtown area. And so this creates an opportunity potentially for new development of apartments or mixed-use development with retail on the ground floor. This all came from our. I don't wanna just do a monologue up here, so that'll sound reasonably reflective of what's going on. I mean, what I took away from that is there's a lot of potential here, but it's largely sort of the community needs to support downtown Selma. Like, there's assets, but sort of Selma needs to be for Selma and supported by Selman's to realize this opportunity in the downtown. We came up with four key strategies that are in the document, but I'm not gonna go through them point by point. So there's strategies and actions under each one. What I wanna focus on tonight are the priority projects. I think that's probably the most tangible and the most exciting, but here they are. So we feel like, you know, you do need to create a strong identity and a sense of place. This can be done, you know, again, through the trees, the lighting, but, you know, other investments in Lincoln Park, you know, signage, a whole number of things, activating the downtown. Again, there could be sort of recreation things added into Lincoln Park or reuse of the Union Pacific right-of-way, closing down High Street on different, you know, occasions, more than just the marching band festival and the raisin festival. It's a walkable area, but there's some kind of wide streets that chop things up, so McCall can be a bit of a hazard. We've talked about how it's like a truck route and people will move quickly through town. You know, Rose is a really wide street that kind of separates the shopping center from the park, and, you know, so there's a way to have it kind of click together a little better by looking at the streets and the intersections. And then we have this fourth strategy, which is about leadership and administration. Little bit about why we wanted to get you all in the same room, because you gotta work together. We need the bid and the council and staff and other civic organizations, you know, like Rotary, and I don't know who else you guys all have here. You know, to be collectively investing in this vision of downtown Selma, but there has to be sort of a willingness to collaborate and cooperate. I didn't mention this, but I grew up just outside of town, off of a Delray or ditch. And I remember this first wave of upgrades to downtown that happened in, when I was in college, so what, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, I think when Pat Helm, those of you remember Pat Helm as the mayor. And, and I don't know if there was a great level of political cohesion or singular focus, or if it was just Pat Helm's force of nature making it happen, but that was when a lot of that facade improvement happened, occurred that really kind of elevated downtown and, you know, gave it a fresh look. So I think we have a, a lot of opportunity here, but it's gonna take a sort of a collaborative effort to realize, you know, the, the potential of the downtown area. But you can see I'm a little more invested than just any old planning consultant, so. Okay, here's our priority projects. All right, so here, here we go. It helps, I keyed them into the map, so we'll stick with it. Okay, priority project one is this downtown core streetscape. So we all recognize it was a tragedy to lose the trees, and we understand there were reasons why that happened, but, you know, we need the trees to come back, but not just plunking new trees back in the same tree areas. There is an opportunity to do something, you know, different, unique, you know, a little bit more thoughtful or comprehensive. So I just kind of put this streetscape, one, in this general area, but, you know, along High Street, and then coming down onto Second, and then moving down, I think this is First Street, and then kind of in this general area, and then East Front Street. So this is kind of the, the core area that we think of for the, the streetscape. And then number two is this gateway down here, which you do have a grant for that's moving forward. I have some images and examples of all this stuff showing up, but we talked about the opportunity to sort of have a, I don't know, smoother transition from the highway onto Second Street, some gateway potentially in this area to really announce that you're coming into the downtown area. Three, we just see some opportunity to do some food and beverage. Everybody wants more restaurants. We saw that there's not a whole bunch of, like, empty restaurant space up for grabs, so we have to be creative. So this is on a vacant lot, but it's to say you could put in food trucks, picnic tables, get something going in the meantime. For the safer streets and intersections, you'll see in a little bit a proposal for a roundabout in that area. A couple ideas of how to activate the Union Pacific right-of-way. Our colleague Chris is very into soccer, so he has these urban footsall soccer field idea that, you know, would be considered a temporary use on the right-of-way, which maybe Union Pacific would go along with. And then also this idea of this microforest, I'll show you some examples. Adding some play equipment or a splash pad or both to Lincoln Park, and then we just had an example of new development down here. Again, it's a vacant lot, I think it may be a city-owned lot, I'm not quite sure, but there's a couple of those that might be good sites to look for new development. So I'm just gonna go through them one by one, and if you have any questions or thoughts, suggestions, just let me know. Okay. So the first one is this downtown core streetscape. This is working, yes? Yeah, enough? Okay. All right. And so you can see, kind of, looking again on First Street and Second Street, and, and sort of continuing down that way over here onto North, this, this piece, and then coming up First Street, and then it would probably wrap around Second Street. But this is just a layout example that shows how you keep the diagonal parking, create more space for trees. And so you see the increase in canopy cover, increase in trees, does result in the loss of, you know, eight to twelve parking spaces in this particular area, on-street spaces. So keep in mind there are off-street spaces as well. Okay. You're, you're driving? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay. And then here's just a few examples of how things have been done in a few other places. We really liked this example from Series, California, by Modesto. You can see they have the diagonal parking, but they've also sort of pulled the trees out a little bit, so they're, they're not on the sidewalk, they're a little bit in the street, which means you can have a bigger tree canopy, they don't block the signs as much, put more shade on the cars, all positive things. So there's just one example, and then we also looked at a similar layout from Lowdy, so we can go to the next. You can get a sense of the opportunity to think, think this through more significantly. And we looked at some different types of trees, we looked at sycamores and ginkgos, and these are jacarandas, these beautiful purple trees that make a mess, so people love them and people hate them, but they are signature. So. So one thing that people like to do with the trees is to, you know, have an event related to them, the cherry blossoms in Washington DC. And, you know, I live in LA and when the jacarandas bloom, it's, you know, it's kind of magical with these purple flowers. So, you know, we could think about not just a tree for shade, but that that itself could create some sort of an event. Can go to the next one on lights, different ways to do lights. So hopefully this helps you see the level we're at. We're like, these are the things you need to look at, but there is another sole iteration of sort of specific design. So, um, you know, the picture on the left is a little bit like what you had before when there were trees and lights in the trees, but there's other ways to string the lights over the street, create a roof. Those aren't mutually exclusive. And then we just looked at, um, some rough sketches of what this signage could look, look like. Um, so the one on the left, you know, playing off the raisin capital and a bunch of grapes. I mean, I think the raisin capital of the world is a huge asset. It's a thing you have, people recognize it. Um, it's, uh, it's an identity that's, you know, in your city logo and all of these places. But, you know, maybe you want to not be the raisin capital forever. I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm positive to it. Then these other two are just trying to be a little more historic looking or contemporary looking. And we just gave some ideas of color palettes and the fonts and how this could go together. Um, more just to have you, give you some food for thought about, you know, how you want this to be reflective, you know, is it old fashionedy or is it really around the agriculture character or is it sort of looking forward and being more streamlined and modern? Now we're on to priority project number two, the Second Street Gateway. Um, this shows a couple of examples. So, um, I'm sure have driven through the one on the way to Fresno, which is, you know, it's always fun to go up Old 99 and, and go through that. Um, it, you know, it covers the street, um, you know, and then other places will have something vertical that's on either side of the street, but doesn't have to cover the street. And I don't know what our city engineer thinks about covering the street, but it probably raises all kinds of safety concerns. Um, but, but there are, um, these are just examples. And then I think there's, uh, another one here from Series. Nope. I took that slide out to not have it be so, so long. There is a gateway there right now. It's just not that big. So it's this brick thing that says, welcome to city of Selma. So the first time I really looked at this stuff, I'm like, they need a gateway treatment on Second Street. And then I went back, I was like, oh, they have a gateway treatment on Second Street. It's just like, it's, it's not assertive enough. Um, and go on to number three. Uh, more food and beverage options. So this is an example of how you could use, um, space between buildings to make some type of a, uh, outdoor seating area. Um, I think if we go to the next slide. This idea of the public parking lots being a temporary space to have some type of activity. Um, leave a lot here and then the next slide will show you this idea of it sort of transformed temporarily or semi-permanently through the sort of, um, some type of, uh, item that isn't permanent, but can still provide the services and then the picnic tables and the shade structures and the, and the trees. And that could either be a permanent shift or it could be something that happens temporarily and then it's a parking lot the rest of the time. This is all in response to the issue that there again, aren't a whole lot of vacant, already permitted, already built out restaurants spaces, and it costs a lot of money to build a new restaurant. Trying to find ways to do things on a, a temporary basis. Just need a, a regular old microphone. Okay. Sacramento, but just of a, of a parking lot area and a temporary conversion to a, a beater garden. Can go to the next slide. Um, and acknowledging that some of this apparently has been happening. So I don't know if it's just coincidental, um, or inspired by, but, um, we were happy to see that an event along these lines happened this summer, you know, right in downtown Selma. So kind of proof of concept at least. And let me pause. So we had the, uh, streetscape, the gateway, and this more food and beverage options. Any thoughts or comments? Am I missing something? Are these good ideas?
I think that some of the ideas are good, but closing off the parking lots, it, Selma's doesn't have any parking as it is. Um, and to take away a whole parking lot, I think it would be more detrimental than, than, um, helpful, just because people are going to be spinning around, driving around, trying to find a parking space and give up. I know I do that on a regular basis, not even trying to, it's like I go around twice. If I can't find a parking space, forget it, I'll do it later kind of thing. And so it keeps me from stopping downtown. And so I think that if you're going to get rid of a whole parking lot, even if it's just for the night or, or a day, um, your people are not going to come because they're, yeah, you can say you can park by the, by the park and walk over. For the majority of the people, probably it's not too bad, but we have a lot of elderly people too, who want to participate and it just makes it harder for them to get around. There's no handicap spots. There's no, there's no, and transportation, little trolleys or whatever to take you to the event. So, um, I think it would just be, um, I don't think it would be helpful to get rid of the park, the few parking spaces. So even with the trees, getting rid of eight to 12 parking spaces is eight to 12 parking spaces that are not going to be there anymore.
Okay. Thanks. I have a. Everybody speak. Okay. Open for public comment. It's for the people online.
Uh, I agree with Teresa's assessment because we also, you got to remember, we also have the Selma Art Center, who brings a lot of people in from out of town. If you take the parking spots away, guess what? They're not going to come in, they're not going to spend money in Selma, and they're not going to bring their kids to participate. We had a lot of kids that come from, you know, Fresno to Larry, Hanford. They bring their kids every day to practice and stuff. And they come for the ladies and if you take away the parking, we're going to lose that too. So you got to be very, very careful in what you do about taking, we cannot afford to give up any space. We've got to be a little, a little more creative and making these changes.
Okay. I have, you know, this is a strategic plan to look for the future and better our downtown. So when you're looking at eliminating a couple of, a company, even speakers, things like that, right? So, and that's something that the community was asking for. So it's a give and take. So when we look and we're always going to have a conscientious, someone say, well, what about this and what about that, right? So that's why we're having this strategic plan. We also, and you just, and I really love the fact of the diagonal, eliminating eight and we can bring in some trees, add the lighting, add the sound. And the reason why the infrastructure, right? The infrastructure is going to take what we're going to do with it. So from my perspective of looking what you're doing and looking at that approach, it eliminates and gives more, more ability to bring in all the aspects that have been talked about for the last two years and the concerns of what they're stating. We also do have some parking that has never been used. I am one that owned a restaurant for 14 years in downtown. So I understand that there's been a parking lot in the back that's been vacant. Nobody's, nobody's issue. It's just the fact that how we steer it and how we actually using the city and the plans, we can approach it where the people can park there. It's just a matter of how we're strategic, the logistics. But in regard to gather and work with the, um, already the, the, the parking structures we have that haven't been utilized. If we can utilize them, we can actually work together. I'm not saying no to that. That is concerns, lights, speakers, trees. We are going to have to give something up, but what can we as a community group work together to find other areas we can use to add the parking more convenient and add all rational? So, so I agree with what you're stating, but I also agree the concerns, but we can work it together to make this happen if we strategically put the vision together.
And some of that can happen with those signs that I showed, you know? I don't think you have this in the downtown, you know, where it'll say City Hall, High Street, public parking, you know, Lincoln Park. So, I mean, all of that can do the wayfinding so people can find the lots.
I have a question about the trees. Um, is it the only way, uh, to plant those trees is to lose, is to take away the parking? Is there another way to plant the tree?
Theoretically put the trees back where they were. Um, there's some infrastructure issues I know with the, with shallow street light cables, but there were trees in those spaces. So I think they could be, you would keep all the parking that you have.
I also think, uh, just talking about the trees, that the, the trees that are decided upon should be fairly low maintenance because what is it going to cost the city throughout the year to maintain cleanup, sweep, you know, trim and, you know, take care of those trees? So that should really be, uh, thoughtfully considered.
Yes, I totally agree. Yes, sir. Need a microphone.
Um, I just wanted to say about the cafe lighting or the street lighting. I think that putting trees one way or the other is, is a priority, but I like the streets that were, the lights that were strung across the street that were not dependent on trees to be put up. Um, poles or bringing them up off of, off of, um, like those, off of the buildings. So you can have your lights now and not have to worry about waiting for the trees to grow up.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah. And I think the, there's two things. I think you want them on the poles. I think they need their own poles so you can get them up high enough. Um, we've also learned that the streetlights, the historic ones that you have, which I think are great, may not be strong enough to be able to string the cables between them. So they would need their own structure. It could either be on the side of the buildings or if you do this comprehensive approach, then you would have the tree, you would have the pole and it would all be done sort of in a uniform, comprehensive way.
Yeah. And I, again, we're, you know, this is a strategic meeting. So, um, one of the things I'm thinking about is, you know, we have these events as far as having, you know, closing down the parking lots or what have you. If we're planning them accordingly, we coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce, we can coordinate with the BID, with the, um, who else? The Rotary Club or different, and the city to have maybe golf carts or something similar that we can transport people for these events so that that way, you know, if they happen to park farther away, then, you know, it, it would still, it will not deter them from coming into downtown because, you know, we want to use the downtown area more because I've, that's, that's the conversations I've had, is that we want to be able to have more, but there's nothing here to be able to have more restaurants and things like that. So, I mean, it's not going to be something that during business day or business hours will be, you know, doing this. I mean, there might be some planning, but again, strategically we're planning, maybe, you know, coordinate with everyone to have those transportations.
Yeah.
And I think we've got, um, another thing. We've got the police station. I don't know if you mentioned that in your report, Walker, uh, but.
Voice of God.
Right here.
There you are.
In front of you.
Could see you on my.
Is this a short joke? Is that what? No, um, the, uh, the police station has not a lot of parking there. So I really see opportunity for the city, for the bid, for the chamber, um, for all these great groups that, you know, utilize downtown, have a stake in downtown and we all want the best for it. And I think the people have, um, said this is a strategic plan. We are really starting from ground zero. I mean, as you came in, Walker, you see there's nothing there. It's a moonscape, no trees, no lights, no speakers, no really nothing. So really this is kind of going from ground zero and creating it from scratch. And it's an exciting time for the people of Selma to make their choice as to who's going to take our city forward. That's the strategy here. And that's where we're moving. And with that police station that has not been, had anything done with it, when you close down those parking lots on High Street, you could utilize that police station for parking with a trolley. So there are some real workable solutions. And I saw where you put that pole idea in there to string the lights from on the trees that aren't mature yet. So that's, that's a point well taken too. And the biggest point I'm taking from one through four is get trees back in, get lights back in ASAP and do it right.
Yep.
Um, I, I'll just pony back off of that. Lights are very important. They talk about it all the time. It's, it's very clear. It's going to be really difficult to get rid of those parking lots. Everybody wants them here still, but for events, is there any way we can use, according to Trahilo, with that parking lot would be one that's not being used, but hop on our alleys just for the, our events only. I know we can't really block the alleys, but for just events, there's areas you can put specific day. I think that we could really make the alleys look really nice with our trash cans, making them. And a lot of, um, ideas on how to hide the, the trash cans through, uh, really very easy, um, um, items you can make with the school district. Uh, that could be a project and then we put flowers on top. Um, and we could really make the alleys look nice just for our, our events. And at the same time, it'll beautify our entire city with some of these alleys for our downtown. That's just an idea, out thinking outside the box.
Yeah. Thank you.
As far as the food trucks in the parking lots, it seems like it's a natural to have it right in front of the park and tables can go on the grass in the park. And there's that parking lot that is right next to the grass there. Food trucks can line up right there. You can also block off part of that street right there and without disturbing the parking downtown at all. So, I mean, that's a, that's a automatic, perfect, easy, free thing that.
It's, it does something like that? There, yeah, yeah. I think these, I mean, these are all good ideas and I, you know, the alleys, it's kind of an exciting space because you're sort of in the back of the buildings. I'm not completely well oriented, but there is actually a really cool alley. It's kind of in this part of downtown. It has a little bend to it and you're on the backside of the building. So, yeah, I was with a friend. I was like, this is the perfect place to have sort of an outdoor patio. He's like, you know how hot it gets here in the summer, Walker?
Okay. What about the, is this working? Yeah. Okay. Oh, Stella Ramirez, uh, Selma, California. What about the place over behind that, um, on the side of Wilkins, behind the police station? There's a big lot there. There's another one on the other side of the, uh, there across the street. There's two empty lots there. Wouldn't they be able to make those into parking spaces? Like just put like asphalt on there and that way they can park there? Because for example, the, um, the parade's coming up at the end of the month and people are parking all along resident, residential areas. And that would be perfect. You've got two places there for parking, either for parking or have those structures up with, uh, what is it? With, uh, taco trucks and all of that, use that. You don't even have to go into, you know, Selma there downtown. You can have it there right in the entrance and have a parking on the other side instead of, you know? And it won't cost anything. All you have to do is just put cement there or, you know, whatever, and that's it. Ready to go. I'm just saying.
No, it's good. I think that.
The box, as she said.
That, that may be owned by the railroad, but again, it's like, it's not a permanent use. So the question I think is, you know, will people park there and walk to wherever they want to get to? Because I think there's a desire to park as close as you possibly can to wherever you're But as you can see, there's a number of parking options in the downtown. Maybe, I don't know, being a little more thoughtful about when people need to be directed to these other lots when there's some special event.
We'll see. Don't get me wrong, uh, downtown of Fresno, they did, they revitalized the auto mall. They brought back the lights, the trees and everything. And it, uh, it flourished, I know flourished. It's, and, uh, now I, I know in your expertise over there, you've seen other cities have done this. I'm going to ask is, okay, the city of Selma with this kind of built out plan, uh, what do we look at as far as dollars as revenue as far as doing? we look at as far as dollars, as revenue, as far as doing a build-out of this structure?
I don't know. I don't think we're at a. Yeah, I, I don't know, because we haven't even tried to put a dollar amount to it. This, you know, I'm just being upfront with you. We looked at the strategic level of what's important. That would be, be a next step. And in the document, it says the next step is to do a schematic set of drawings for whatever the streetscape would look like, and then to get a, get a number for it.
So, the reason why I ask that question is, you know, the, don't get me wrong, everybody has good ideas, the parking and everything. That's, it's nice. It's, it's good that everybody comes to the table, gives input. The, but the bottom line, the cost factor behind this, that's the concern I'm looking at is, is this possible down the road or is it a future project or is it now project? Or where's the money going to come from? Or are we looking at this, you know? Do we do it in a small, that's the other issue, as a citizen, you know, that's what I look at for the future plans of city of Selma.
Okay. Okay, let's take Parminder and then I want to move along, because you guys have closed session at 5:30 or something, so.
Just a few comments, Walker. The, I think the signage coming into Selma, the big sign, the gateway sign.
Yes.
Would be a really nice thing, because it makes the city look, it has presence. And if we're looking for a new look, I know we focus on the old, but we've got to focus moving forward and what's working for the cities and that big gateway sign. Every time I'm in Fresno or another big city, that stands out. People take pictures next to it. It grabs attention for your city. Terms of parking, I was in a meeting here at City Hall. I think there's a lot of spots in the immediate downtown. So, if we lost eight or 10, but now we create the vibe, the different vibe where streets have larger canopies on their trees, I think that's a better, more vibrant, especially if the lights are up top higher on a pole. Now, we have a more dimensional streetscape. And we shouldn't worry, when we go to the coast or these other big cities, we don't worry about walking. We know we're going to walk a quarter mile, half a mile. Why are we worried about walking two blocks? That's, you know, everybody needs their steps.
All right, differences of opinion, but we get the message that parking is important.
Walker, just really quick right over here. The closed session was scheduled, was noticed for 5:30, but we're not necessarily restricted to that. We had four to six blocked off for this session. In case we finished early, we noticed it for 5:30. So, don't feel like you have to rush.
All right, good. Yes.
Point.
Right ahead.
How are we going to address the wrong type of tenants that we have downtown? The service tenants, how do we address that as a city? I do have some of my ideas, but I want to hear yours.
And on, as part of that, I was going to say, more food and beverage options. Where are we going to put those? The food trucks are nice, but it's a temporary thing. We'd like to have more restaurants, a variety of restaurants or service industry, you know, retail stores, things that are going to generate income. You want to build all these things. And Mr. Avalos asked, where are we going to get the money? Well, we need revenue, tax revenue to do those things. And in order to do those things, we need businesses that will generate that tax revenue. So, having a food truck on a Friday is nice, but having a restaurant five days a week or six days a week is better.
Yes, yes. Well, I think the, this is how I would think about it, is the, to have demand for retail. I think there isn't so much demand for retail now, because there isn't so much foot traffic. And so, the restaurants are going to generate the foot traffic that then would have somebody think I could open a store down there and it would be successful. And then they would be, when there's a vacancy, competing with the service industry that could be on the second floor or be somewhere else. So, I do think it's, it's really driven by the, the foot traffic and that's on the food and beverage. And then we are a little stuck, because like I've said, unless there's someplace I don't know about, it's not, again, like there's vacant restaurants in the downtown area. Are there?
You started, you started this by stating that you needed Selma residents to take care of Selma's businesses. That's key before anything else. So, how do you get the word and having the bid and having the city Chamber of Commerce? How do you get them to entangle together to make the residents? Because I'll tell you what, and I'll tell you exactly, it's $68 to $90,000 to build a kitchen, because I built it. But who's going to pay that, knowing that when they look at the numbers and they do an analysis and they know that the residents of Selma will leave out of town and go somewhere else rather than in town? So, when you bring in that approach, but, but what are the key points and some of the residents brought up that where's the cost going to come? Well, I'll tell you just my own opinion, and, you know, it's a small opinion, but if you don't start somewhere, we're never going to have it.
Yeah.
And this is the strategic plan. We strategically bring a plan and we start, and we can talk about long-term, short-term goals. If the trees and the lighting are the most important things, we can phase those into budgets, correct? But if we don't have a plan that hasn't been brought, and we can look for monies, that's one. But truly, you said something really, really important that I never factored in when I built my restaurant. It was how much participant will we get from the community? And, and, and this is a true approach. And when you look on Facebook, and I have no social media, but, and thank God for that, but, but when you look on social media in Selma, you have 90% of the social media selling food out of their homes.
Huge opportunity.
Well, it's an opportunity, but it's, but for businesses, national restaurants, people wanting to come to Selma, they're not going to come. So, how do we approach the commercial? How do we approach the Chamber of Commerce, the bid, and ourselves to incorporate everybody together, to rally around the businesses that are coming to? Those are key points, but at the same time, I want to remind everyone, this is a strategic plan. This is the first step to go and then put in a number to it, and then passing it over to the council and saying, hey, what are you going to do? Is it going to be a short-term or a long-term? So, I mean, I, I think, and I also think that we should just throw every wish list in here, parkings in downtown that we could use. It's, it's about logistics and.
There, you know, what's interesting is there are a number of restaurants in downtown Selma. I mean, there's Cho's, is Golden Dragon open? Yes, okay. What's the name of the new one that's on High Street? Antonio's, I've only been there once. It was crowded. Rodolfo's, my mom's favorite restaurant. There's the Wahacon Restaurant. There's the, what is it, Gee's? The, the challenge is that they're, you know, sorry, now's when I have to bring up Kingsburg. Like, they have a cluster. Like, you walk down Draper and there's like five or six restaurants kind of in a row on both sides of the street. And you're like, stuff's happening here. People are walking around. And, and it's so, you may have as many restaurants, they're just not sort of in a clustered area. And so, that's, part of it is to just acknowledge what's here. And then I would say that we've seen some examples on social media where people have been, you know, talking about new things happening in downtown Selma, whether it's, again, Maiden Voyage or new restaurant on High Street. I'm always afraid I'm going to say the wrong name. And, but I think there has to be the support of the community, which is really the, what you're saying, because like, we're not, you know, we're not holding our breath to hope that like Chili's opens downtown or Applebee's. Like, that's probably not likely to happen, but there's a lot of people with money to spend and looking for a place to go. And I think some of the idea with these temporary uses is to create more activity on a temporary basis. Maybe somebody's successful enough to say, I'll spend the $60,000 to build out the kitchen. And then longer term, there's examples in here of building, you know, a new building with housing and the restaurant at the bottom. You know, that's a seven-year trajectory. You know, so we're trying to figure out what we can do now and what we could do long-term. All of these are very helpful suggestions. Okay. Safer Streets and Intersections. So, I already talked about some of these challenging streets here. Feels like very wide and separates you from, you know, the shopping center over here. You know, I think we talked about this, and some of this could just be fixed with striping so that you can sort of extend the curb. Or we talked about this bigger picture idea of the roundabout, which is another way to say, you've arrived. If you're wondering if you're in downtown Selma, you are. Could slow down traffic, connect a lot of these different places, and then be sort of a significant, sort of aesthetic feature in the downtown. So, I think this is Foster's Freeze, if I'm oriented correctly. Yeah. Um, I like it, because I always find these triangle intersections to be incredibly confusing. And I've heard people say this, I don't like to drive through downtown Selma because it's so confusing and I get turned around. So, and, you know, the idea is that everybody goes through this at 15 miles an hour and figures out where they're going. The speeds are slow, but you don't have a bunch of signals that take forever, and it does create a sense of place. So. And, yeah, thank you, Jan. So, Jan was just saying, and you could add the wayfinding the signs that say, public parking, library, art center, et cetera. Okay, next one. And we talked about Second Street already of how, I don't have a picture of that. But on Second Street, it's just to say, you know, when you come off the freeway, it's wide, and we could sort of narrow it down a little more smoothly so that by the time you're crossing the tracks there by Wilkins, it already feels like a, a street in downtown rather than this thoroughfare. Because that area is a little challenging if you are in the diagonal parking and cars are coming through at 35 miles an hour. So, it's another place to just increase the safety, but I also to get people to slow down and acknowledge that they're in downtown Selma. It also is going to make it easier to make the left and get onto High Street, which is kind of the core. And then we just had some ideas for what to do with all of this Southern Pacific right away. And there's, you know, a lot of space in this area. So, we have one that shows the soccer field. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so Chris, my colleague, this is what these look like, these footsoff fields. So, it's like a mini soccer field with, you know, these low walls, smaller nets. And Chris laid it out, and we can fit two of them in this area, which, you know, creates something for kids to do, generate activity, put to good use this otherwise sort of barrier that you have between the two sides of, of downtown. So, that's one idea. And then this idea is very popular, this Milwaukee, the micro forest. Here's just a couple of pictures of what it can look like, as well as planting it. It's just a dense planting of plants that like to live together, grasses, shrubs, trees. Creates a lot of biomass, can create some shade, can create habitat. But more importantly, they're usually done with the community. So, it's a community building process as, as much as it is sort of a landscaping effort. And, you know, we don't know where it would go, but these are just a few spots that we had identified that could be likely candidates. So.
Back to the previous.
Sure.
Just wanted to confirm where you have that.
Yeah. Right, here's, here's First Street. Here's the railroad tracks. Where was, I think this is the old police station? Yes. So, yeah, just in this. Piece next to the, next to the tracks.
On the side, if that was.
Yes, yeah. And, you know, this, they play ball with us on this. They're difficult, but we're hoping, because this is not a permanent use and it could be temporary, that these are things that they could go along with. And then the other ideas had come up about using it for parking. Forget who, you had this, someone over here. Yes, you had that idea. Good. So, is, you know, to put that to some sort of active use and not just have it be this barren strip, it kind of chops your city enough. Okay, that's number five. We have seven. So, on to number six. We really felt that Lincoln Park is underutilized and, and kind of what it's supposed to be used for is a little bit unclear. It's this sort of big area of lawn with some trees. So, it's kind of like the, you know, Kensington Gardens or something of Selma, this formal public park. But it doesn't, at least when I've been there, it doesn't seem to have so much activity going on. I'm not sure what happens within the senior center.
Just clarification, Walker. There used to be the Selma Women's Club there. Used to be a building there.
Yeah.
Corner. And it got more utilization than when that building got condemned and torn down, nothing went up in its place.
Right.
So, there's real potential. Space there, and it could be filled with something that would be useful for the community.
Yeah. And usually, you want to get your kids out of the house and take them someplace. So, this is the ideas behind the park and splash, you know, the splash pad, which are just some thoughts, you know, the playground equipment is to, you know, put in something that activates it, that drives people there, who would then say like, let's go get a cup of coffee, let's go get lunch, let's go look at those stores. Again, ways to bring people, you know, into the downtown area. And exactly where everything would be located, you know, to be determined. But we also just saw that there's, there's this nice connection with the library, just to create more activity is really all that we're about. And then this longer-term vision of, of new development, of, you know, urban infill development of, you know, mixed-use buildings, which doesn't really seem like what one thinks of with Selma. You think of the expansion of the single-family houses, the pre-fury. There are a good number of, are pretty good candidates for development. You know, this could be senior housing, for example. And, and again, when you step back and look at the downtown and all of its assets, it would be a pretty good place to live as an older person with quite a bit within walking distance. Where there's a drugstore, there's a grocery store. There's the art center, there's the park, senior center, you know, there's a, quite a bit. So, that's, you know, an idea. And then it gives us a way to connect a few of the dots, because when we look at this rendering, so there's the, yeah, we can go to the next slide. But here's the, the location that we looked at. And then my colleagues, we go to the next slide, Alicia, sort of drawn up what it could potentially look like. So, two are, well, this would be a ground floor retail with two stories above, again, some outdoor seating area. And then potentially, an opportunity to build out the restaurant space with the new construction, rather than trying to retrofit it into an existing building. I'm told that those vent hoods are one of the bigger concerns. They cost a lot of money. And, yes, you. Yeah. Yeah.
Excuse me. Where do the residents that are in that building park their cars?
It could be underground, which is expensive, or yes.
Which doesn't exist.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. So, this is concept level. It sort of gets us thinking like, right, what if there were, you know, what if there were apartments downtown and so, you know, your parents could live there, your mom or us, you know, in 20 years from now? And just to, just to kind of be, having the, the mind open for some of these longer-term plans. But, you know, naturally, the parking would have to get figured out. This isn't your issue, but in a number of the places I work, by virtue of state law, you can build these apartment buildings with no parking spaces, which I think is completely unrealistic, because people have cars and they need cars. And all it means is you're going to clog up the streets around there with, with cars or push it into the other neighborhoods. So, yeah, you have to be conscientious about the, the development. And I mean, anything that would get built, obviously, it's going to be seen by the Planning Commission and the City Council and, you know, broadly reviewed. Jerome would give it the once-over. So, okay, those are the seven priority projects in the plan. Before we move along, any thoughts about those? We could go backwards, Alicia, to start it. Go back to, we'll just flip through them so people can remember.
Have the activity to kind of rank.
I think we did one through three, and then we have the Safer Streets and Intersections. We have the. Of Lincoln Park, we have the new development, we have the Union Pacific Railroad upgrades. Wanted to do a little break from the slides. Ranking.
We'll go through and capture thoughts afterward, but I think right now, the purpose of this exercise is to capture, we went through all seven of the priority projects. And we want to hear from you guys. If you were to hold the magic wand in your hand, how would you rank them in order from one to seven? In terms of how would they impact the downtown, how important are they to you? How important do you feel that they are to the community? How important do you feel that they are to the community? Just a quick scan, is anybody having trouble participating, anybody that I can help, cool.
How are we doing? Can wait another couple of minutes. Kind of have to hold it and slide the thing around.
Anybody still working on it?
Okay. Interesting. Okay, well, in this informal voting polling is interesting. I kind of thought the streetscape plan would be number one. Felt like it was the most important, which is why I made it priority project number one. It is kind of fundamental to a number of other things. But to see the food and beverage options up there so highly, I'm not supportive of the limited space and how to provide those opportunities without having sort of like permanent restaurant space or permitted kitchen, which I think does get us back into the food truck, the temporary event, or some kind of a street vending option, which we haven't really talked about at all, which would probably be more event related as well. Yes.
To accommodate more restaurants downtown, you would need to relocate maybe a couple, two or three of the service of spots, you know, tenants that are there. And if the city could help them relocate to another street, that would open up High Street to have more restaurants. The other thing is that some of those buildings are not up to code, I understand. And if the city could offer to purchase those buildings, they could bring them up to code. And, you know, I know everybody's going to say, oh, that's very expensive. But all of these other projects are very expensive, okay? If you put in a playground and you do all this other stuff and you don't have downtown, you've spent the money for nothing. And if the city does buy those buildings, they could contract with a realtor to get in, good tenants in there. And at least there would be a return on the investment, okay? A playground doesn't give you any return on investment, even though it's those buildings, fixing them up, getting good tenants in there. Then you have created the downtown area that you're looking for, that will attract people. And then do some of the other projects around there to help solidify.
Yes. Yeah, so I think, um, on the first point, yes, like some spaces would need to be vacated so that this restaurant, you know, construction and operation could happen. And I, I mean, maybe that just happens as a matter of course, like someone's lease is running out and, you know, it's not re-upped and, you know. What you bring up, though, is a lot of interesting discussion about the role of the city. Because often the city is in a more of a reactionary mode. Somebody comes in with a proposal or a set of plans and it has to get reviewed. But part of economic development that Jan is involved in quite a bit, you know, is to do what you've talked about, to go out and, you know, find somebody. I think this is what happened with, tell me the name of the new place on High Street again? Antonio's. Went out and found Antonio's and said, I have a restaurant I don't want to operate anymore. Would somebody like to operate it in, I think what they had a space in? Fresno, so you sort of entice them to come down here, here's an opportunity. So, yes. Yeah, no, I think this can be, tell me if I'm wrong, Jan, but this can be some of the role of the bid is to cultivate interest in, you know, the bid, you know, can do some things and can't do other things, which you can certainly do marketing and you can deal with cleanliness and safety and, you know, do some of this outreach to say, you know, we really think you should look at downtown Selma. Opportunity.
There's a perfect example of the bakery that was right on the corner of McCollin, High Street. Nobody's interested in doing anything with it because work needs to be done. If the city had redevelopment money or something that could purchase that building, bring it up to code, then turn around and sell it to someone or rent it out to a couple of businesses even, to a small business, you know, like in Their Mother's Uncle sells something to eat. Into a smaller portions to where people could rent to sell their food from, rather than from their home, and become legal to be able to do that, you know, they're contributing to the economy and we're getting money back and we're.
Yeah. These are great, great ideas. Just, I'll just share this thought before I forget it. You know, I have a friend of mine, he's done a couple of developments where it's just four or five commercial grade kitchens. So people can move from like cooking and stuff in their house to being able to meet the county health code and either sell it as a vendor or otherwise. And I think they can rent it, you know, by the day or a couple of days. So there may be some combination of that with sort of the food hall. It's a possibility, yes.
Just to comment on the corner building where Baby Cakes was. Bid and City Hall is working with Naughty Chicks to get that plan through approval and they will be coming into that building.
And what do they do?
They're pretzels. They're basking robins of pretzels.
Basking robins of pretzels, naughty chicks.
Coming, yeah.
Okay. And then what largely the role that redevelopment agencies used to play before they, so they were kind of the deal making part of the city who was able to get into some of these transactions and not, not just be reviewing things, but, you know, sort of promoting. But it doesn't mean that a lot of that outreach to let people know that, you know, things are happening in downtown Selma and maybe they should look at it, you know, it couldn't happen. It doesn't mean that the bid needs to work with, you know, the council and it needs to work with staff. And hopefully this plan starts to move things towards this shared vision, which we got a little bit of with this, with this poll. But we've got the sort of the public realm or the outside space through with the streetscape and you can start to see the synergies there. Okay, any other thoughts on those?
How does zoning play into some of those retail places on High Street or new development?
The Central Business District Zone District was added as part of the zoning code update, which was recently approved by the planning commission and reaffirmed by the city council. As part of that exercise, Walter and Walker and his team proposed some use changes to the Central Business District to help promote those types of uses downtown. So staff is already ahead of the game in terms of promoting those types of uses downtown.
The new zoning would prevent some of those service type businesses from coming in?
I don't know if it would prevent them, but it allows other uses to compete with those businesses for vacant spots in downtown. So it's a matter of who does the owner prefer to have at, it's still a property owned by a private citizen.
Right.
So the city has limited ability apart from zoning to promote certain types of uses. What we've done is we understand that there should be some service, but also entertainment type uses downtown. And I think there's some buy-in from the local community that owns property perhaps downtown to seek out those types of uses downtown if that's, if that's what the desire is.
Okay, last piece of this just gets into some of the implementation. I'm putting up this information about funding mostly to share with you that we've thought about this and looked at funding sources. I understand where the money might come from. So is the general fund, which has to pay for all kinds of things like police and fire and city staff. So, you know, it may, there may be some funding there that can support these things, but there's a lot of other demand for that. And then, you know, the bid assesses themselves a certain amount and I think it generates 40,000?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, so you can see what it could be spent on. Again, power washing sidewalks, trash pickup, security maybe, marketing, you know, paying for somebody to do social media posts, generating enthusiasm, you know. It's not a ton of money, but it's enough money to create some focused effort on downtown. Yes. Hello?
I don't know if it worked. Oh, there, there. Hey. Now it's on, okay. Sorry for my lovely technology knowledge. What I was going to say is that the city council has also allocated funding to the bid as part of their operational funding. So it's important that they use that properly, but also that they keep the bid money separate from the council money. And either one of those can be spent towards this work.
Promotion in these types of things. And then there's the city, the CIP stands for the Capital Improvement Plan, which is fixing roads, sewers, lighting. You know, some of the cost of the streetscape could be folded into the capital improvement plan, just as sort of maintenance and upkeep. And then we looked at a number of federal, state and local grants, you know, which can come from all kinds of different directions. You know, there's a lot of discussion that I'm involved in around urban heat mitigation from a public health standpoint. And tree planting could happen from that direction. So it isn't make your downtown pretty, it's make your downtown, you know, less exposed to high heat to protect the health of your residents. But there is quite, there's some funding through those types of things. There's a number of sort of energy efficiency related sources of funding that are coming through the IRA, which, you know, we may be able to do energy efficient cafe lighting and have that be considered, you know, IRA qualified. And also Infrastructure and Jobs Act. And then there are these other options that could be considered, which other cities do, is they create a tax increment district or a taxation district. That's usually on the owners to generate a designated source of money that goes back into the bid. So it's effectively kind of a proxy for redevelopment, but that's something that could be considered. The current bid are tenants who are paying what additional amount in their business license fee. That's how that's operated. So it's the tenants making that commitment, it's not on the owners. So this tax increment district could be on the, on the owners. And then, you know, we talked about public-private partnerships, which could be something like, I don't know who your healthcare company is up here, the dominant one, but where I am, like Kaiser has a big presence, you know, and Kaiser is paid for things like playground equipment because it's a way to get kids to be healthy. So this is just one example. So you look at, you know, who the companies are around here who may want to, you know, have some vested interest in the region or the community and you could enter into some private partnership for them. The footsall soccer fields could be another example where someone may want to, may want to sponsor that. Okay, and then this is just showing you what's in the plan, we go to the next two slides. It just, um, I got our economics consultants to break down all these funding sources by priority projects. So it isn't just a giant list that goes to staff, but it's a little bit better organized. So you can see there's a whole lot of different options, including urban greening grant and the tree recovery grant program that could pay for some of the trees, I expect. And we just go through all of the same thing about the gateway and the food and beverage options, you know, which, and the Economic Development Corporation. So I don't want to go through all of this in a ton of detail more to show you that that's what's been done. There's one more slide on this, Alicia. And then, and then we can go to the final couple pieces. This is, a lot of Jan's work is around this topic and Jan's right here, she's part of our consulting team. And, uh, and we really came to the conclusion that we've got a lot of good ideas about what to do physically with the downtown. But for it to come together, there needs to be this cohesion and leadership, like I sort of had touched on a couple of places. And, you know, we made this sort of classic, you know, three circle Venn diagram to say, what are we trying to accomplish? Which is a vibrant, economically active, fun, enticing downtown Selma. And that really needs to have this sort of cooperative undertaking. Part of that, big part of that, which is described in the plan, is just people understanding their roles and how all of that's supposed to go together with, you know, having this example here of, you know, one small indication of how things could work, you know, with this type of cooperation. And then if we go to the next slide and then I'm going to let Jan jump in. So, you know, Jan has worked with, you know, a number of other cities and really has identified what it takes to be a successful bid. Here's just a picture of the social media, which, you know, makes, makes a difference. So, you know, I don't do it, but my colleagues are like, check out all this stuff. I don't know, Michelle, who's, you know, 24, 25, she's like, look at the socials on downtown Selma, this is exciting. So it really is a way that the message gets, gets communicated. You want to just touch on this a little bit?
I just wanted to say what a great opportunity it is for the Business Improvement District to use the funding they have, to use the cooperation already set up with city council on the funding and to gather the staff as well, working together is how this, how this is going to be successful. Because without everybody understanding that and understanding how important it is to get all of Selma into downtown Selma. But it's the three-part authority here to build the downtown and gather all of Selma to come downtown where you're going to be successful.
Yeah, and so, you know, this includes having an annual work plan that's presented to the council and reporting on that plan. And then, and I don't really know what the structure is for, you know, the bid to check in with other groups. Like I know there's Rotary because they do the marching band parade, is that correct? Yes, yes, or festival. And, you know, and there may be Kiwanis and Lions and, you know, there's a number of actors out there that, you know, I think need to be kind of brought in, brought into the.
Chamber of Commerce as well.
Of course, yes. So it's the work plan, it's the, you know, coordination with people. And then I think, you know, being clear on what you can and can't do with a bid and when you need the city to help you, you know, whether that's signing contracts or, you know, getting insurance for some sort of special event. Or, you know, when to just seek some help, like getting somebody who knows how all the social media stuff, you know, works and get, you know, an intern or volunteer to keep that up to date, so.
Well, if I may say, we have several Rotarians, myself, Nick, Shar. We serve, basically we're Rotarians and we serve on several commissions in the city to bring that, to close that gap and for all of us to work together. So we definitely try to do that.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, then I think the bid has a, I mean, I think you meet regularly, but then there is a sort of annual meeting where everybody's invited and, or could be, you know, where there's a little bit of setting your own strategy for the year and how to spend the money. So I think what we're trying to say is there's a leadership question and there's an administrative question that needs, that needs to be in place so that, you know, this plan, people pay attention to it and it does continue to serve as a strategic document going forward. And that's, that's our goal, is, you know, that, you know, serves that purpose.
And I think Walker has briefly mentioned this, but it's really important that the. And I think Walker has, has briefly mentioned this, but it's really important that the property owners be involved as well. Because while all of this works better with the property owners understanding what's going on.
Yes. Okay, last slide, I think. Maybe one more that says next steps. There we are. Okay. So we're here today with this workshop and the plan is available for comment. I see people have printed out a number of you, and there is a, a poll, I think, pretty similar to what we just had people do. That's on the, on the city website. And then, of course, if you have other comments, I think, is it set up to be emailed to you, Alicia? Yes. And then our goal is to have the document wrapped up by the end of November. And that's sort of when our contract finishes up and, and then, then it's kind of passed on to all of you. And, you know, we hope that it's, you know, a valuable resource going forward.
And I think one of the, one of the people, one of the attendees today said it really well and said that after this draft, we need to look at how we're going to pay for it. Financing is going to be really critical, the sources, the financing. I think that's going to be the logical progression, but everything starts somewhere. And I think we started with the rough draft today. So thank you very much, Walker. Really appreciate your efforts, the efforts of your firm. This is, I think, our, my third go around with, with this and with my exposure to you and everyone else has been there more frequent. So I think it's good, a good, a good framework for our city. And I think that number one issue is those trees and lights. So thank you for bringing that out in that, in that study.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments to share before we, we, under the rest of your meeting? Everybody, anything? Yes.
Can you use your microphone? Sorry. Thank you.
The money is one of the, the main for this to give that to going all these projects. Is, is this something that bonds that can be set it up by the city for next twenty years or so to do all these developments? Because this is pretty big. It's not a little project, you know, it's not a bid to get, I mean, the bid to get only twenty-five thousand dollars from this improvements, but these landscaping, all that stuff is, that seems like a multimillion dollars project. So maybe city needs to be looking into that, just my thought. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the suggestion was to say, you know, should there be some sort of bond to pay for? Well, if it's the downtown streetscape, I mean, we know that there's some, there's some infrastructure in there that needs to be dealt with. So, but, you know, it's not a, it's not a small project to redo the downtown streetscape. It is essential. But I think figuring out how to pay for it, this would be one, one example. If the city has a bonding capacity and wants to go through something like that.
Walker, I don't know if you and I, you and I have had this conversation, but a couple of years ago, the city council directed me to pursue the formation of a EIFD, which is an enhanced infrastructure financing district. And I don't recall if that was mentioned in the draft, but we're essentially doing with the EIFD is establishing an area where we're, your presentation, it essentially replaces the redevelopment agency in terms of being able to take advantage of the increase in property values. And then we can bond against that. And what we were doing was primarily looking at the undeveloped parts of Selma on the west side of the ninety-nine. But I think there's a really big opportunity to, to include the downtown area into that EIFD so that we can issue bonds to, to Mr. Sahoda's point, that would enhance the infrastructure, whether it's storm drain, whether it's lights, whether it's, you know, the landscaping. But I think naturally that takes, you know, five years maybe to start generating enough increment within that district to actually be able to bond against.
Right.
But I think the opportunities are there for us to, you know, now that we can form an EIFD, we had to go through our legis, state legislature for the Sel, for the city of Selma specifically to be able to form an EIFD. We were successful in doing that.
I agree.
And so I think if, if we can maybe talk about how we can outline that in, in the I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. I'm going to check with our, you know, economic consultants to see if they talk about it, but also to just follow up with them on that particular
Yeah.
topic. Yeah. I mean, it could also potentially pay for some of the things that would likely need to happen with the buildings, which, you know, could be seismic, it could be access and could be electrical capacity. Thank you.
I have one, I have a question.
Yes.
This is more to Jan in regards to the BID, you know, for the, for the actual business building or the partial owners, what does the BID have to offer on a yearly or do they have to, to the, on a yearly basis to the actual person that is being, is being taxed? Is there something, and, you know, we talk about buy-in, right? Are we going to get the people to buy in if they don't have, and I'm, I'm not saying every year are we going to have a report? The bid's doing this, 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 this is what, this is what, this is what they brought in twenty-five thousand, this is they're using it. Or is there, has there been any discussion with the bid in regards to accountability and distribution in regards to their funding base?
The bid is, is part, part of the original formation. It was, it was clear there's a management district plan under which they operate. And the assessments for the bid are on the tenants, not on the property owners. So the individual tenants are the ones who pay as part of their business license in, into the city for that. So it's not the
So what if, so, so
Go ahead.
Multiple buildings, multiple businesses. What if, so the tenant gets the, but does the tenant, do we get a breakdown telling us a bid this, that, this, and when is it going to happen and when is it going to be starting?
It should be an annual report from the bid. I'm sure they're working on it. They're, because their business improvement districts are formed for one year and they need to be renewed by the council every year. The original formation documents don't need to, don't need to be managed, but changes can be made to the management district plan. The council needs to approve the budget for the subsequent year. So, yes, there will be an annual report. It should be, we're recommending that it should be in writing. It can just be a presentation, but it's a good idea to have it in writing so that you have it, they have it. But yes, did you have a question about property? Okay.
Question, multiple.
All right.
Yes, I, I have a question. I mean, do you, you guys are volunteers. Do you get guidance or help on writing this report? Or should you, or is this part of Alicia's job?
The last time we presented the report would have been before the budget. I just don't think there were any tangible expenses. The, it had been information for one year. So we presented a budget instead. Here's what we're going to spend since there were no expenses to report. So this year, when they present the, no, the next fiscal year, so before July, when they present that budget, it'll be accompanied by a report on what has been spent by the bid. And it gets distributed to everybody in the improvement district, all of the tenants.
Is the bid funding, um, the source of the facade improvement grants? Is that?
Correct. So that pool of money is there for reimbursement to those who apply and make those improvements to their facade. But, yeah.
What I was going to say to Alicia's point, it was adopted as part of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five city budget, the allocation for the bid. But as part of the bid, they also have goals and measurable criteria that they're aiming for. Increasing social media, having so many applications for the store improvement grant, which was allocated in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as well. So they have other measurables to take to city council during the annual report next year that they didn't have this year because they were in the middle of developing those measurable criteria. So we have tangible information to present to show progress being made, not only for members of the bid in town, but to city councils so that they, they can make an informed decision going forward.
Great. Okay. Oh, that sounds good. Something to say? No? Okay. I didn't get this part of the room. Everybody, any? Happy? More comments? Okay. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll come back for the closed session.
Okay, with that, we are going to go into our closed session, which is a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to five four nine five six dot nine. And that's one case. Before we go into the closed session, I will read a statement from the city attorney. I requested the facts and circumstances of today's closed session item. The city attorney refused to change. The public has a right to know who is suing or threatening to sue their city. I have referred this to the potential violation of the Brown Act by the Cobb, Dowd, and Gin LLP. And with that, we will recess into closed session. And we'll ask the folks in the gallery to please.